The Monday, June 16th, 2025 City of Andalia Council Meeting is now called to order. We anticipate many citizens, many citizen comments regarding the referendum matter, which is not on our agenda tonight, so in order to be timely and get through our regular business of the city and allow those that are here for appointments in various positions and variance request to be heard timely, I ask that a motion be to amend the agenda to move the item comments from interested citizens before the city manager's report immediately following the reading of the May 2025 bill listing and the monthly expenses over $25,000 and a monthly purchase card detail item.
So moved.
A motion by Vice Mayor Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Lewis. Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs? Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Tonight we'll begin with a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of minutes where councils had an opportunity to review the study session meeting minutes along with the council meeting minutes of April 7th and the study session minutes and council meeting minutes of August 21st. Are there any comments or corrections? They stand approved. That brings us to communications petitions and awards where we have three proclamations tonight. Tonight we'll begin with a proclamation for, from the B-City USA to Mr. Al Tuttle, so if he can join me at the podium. All right, well, this is something we do yearly to keep our certification and everything. We certainly appreciate you and everything you've done to make us a B-City. So again, congratulations, and we will present this to you, and we're going to proclaim that the week of June 16th as Pollinator Week here in the City of Andalia.
Thank you very much. I accept that on behalf of the Storers Society of Andalia Butler. We appreciate the city's support since we were named a B-City USA in 2016, so especially Angela Schwartz for her bee display and also for the parks for all the work that they've done in planting pollinator-friendly plants.
All right, well, thank you. There you go. All right, and next we have a proclamation recognizing Paige Harzman. If she could join me up here at the podium? Recognizing Paige for earning the Girl Scout Gold Award. If you don't mind, I'd like to read this to you. Is that okay? All right. All right. Whereas the City of Andalia seeks to recognize and honor those citizens who have distinguished themselves through good deeds and work, and whereas the Girl Scouts Gold Award is the highest achievement within the Girl Scouts in the USA, recognizing the extraordinary accomplishments of senior and ambassador Girl Scouts, and whereas only 5.4% of eligible Girl Scouts earn this prestigious honor, reflecting the exceptional dedication, leadership, and service to the community. And whereas Paige Harzman, a member of Girl Scout Troop 35209 in Andalia and a junior at Chaminade Julian High School, has been a committed Girl Scout for 11 years. And whereas Paige Harzman earned the Gold Award through her exemplary project Awareness of an Alternate for Food Allergies, in which she identified a critical need in her community for increased awareness of food allergies, particularly at youth sporting events. And whereas Paige researched allergen-free snack options, created a comprehensive educational flip book containing information on common allergens, healthy alternatives, and allergy-friendly recipes, and distributed these materials to troop leaders and children's activity organizers across the community. Now, therefore I, Richard Herbst, as the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Andalia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 17th, as Paige Harzman Day in the City of Andalia. Congratulations. And lastly, we have a proclamation for the Parks and Recreation Month. Who's going to be joining? Come on. You can tell who drew the short straws. All right, well, we all know that it's been a very busy year in the Parks and Rec. We've had the complete renovation of several parks. We have new equipment at the rec center, and we appreciate all you do because our Parks and Rec is, you know, definitely an asset to our community and our families that live here. So again, congratulations, and we want to proclaim that July is Parks and Rec Month here in the City of Andalia.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. And this evening, we have the distinguished privilege of recognizing a long-term employee for the City of Andalia, Steve Clark, our Parks and Recreation Director. Steve, if you would stand and be recognized. For those in the audience, just so you know, Steve has served the city for over 37 years in the Parks and Recreation Department and has done an outstanding job. Steve, your leadership has been an example to all of us here. You've, you've served through a number of councils and leadership positions here, and we just want to take this time to acknowledge the work that you've done, the leadership you've provided to Parks and Rec, and your dedicated service to making our city a great place with Parks and Rec programs. So thank you. We wish you the very best. We hate to see you leave, but we understand that's a long time of service, and we just want to wish you the very best in retirement. And I see you've got a whole row of family and friends here, so we'd just like to recognize Steve for his service and give him a round of applause and thank him.
Mr. Clark, would you like to introduce your family?
With me tonight, I have my wife Melanie, my daughters Riley, Katie, and Peyton. My son Carson couldn't be here, as you know. He's in Alaska playing baseball this summer. Just got a video from him. They went to an Air Force Base. The team did today, and he was selected to do a canine activity. So he says, "Sense the video of the canine attacking his arm." So he's here in spirits. So I'd just like to thank you guys for your support over the years. I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec staff for their support of Parks and Rec over the year and the community. You know, we do have a lot of amenities and a really large Parks and Rec presence in this community, but the community has embraced that, and that's awesome over the years. So I will say Bruce Suker was the city manager when I came here 37 years ago, so he was responsible for me being here and then being Parks and Rec Director. Jeff Ogleman, who's in the audience tonight, named me Parks and Rec Director when he was the city manager during the first year of that. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, and that concludes our communications petitions and awards. So if anyone in the audience doesn't want to stay for the remainder of the meeting, now would be a good time to exit. All right, we have no public hearing. That brings us to the city manager's report. Mr. Altouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a number of items and activities going on around the city this week, so we'd like to inform every one of those. First of all, our Star Stripes and Songs with the U.S. Air Force Band of Flight will take place this Thursday evening, June 19th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. So we encourage everyone to join us for a patriotic evening from under the stars as we welcome Flight One, the high-energy rock band from the U.S. Air Force Band of Flight. Get ready for a mix of pop, rock, and Americana classics that will have you tapping your toes and waving the red, white, and blue. Bring a lawn chair, grab your cruise, celebrate freedom and community, and the power of music with us as, as we celebrate this at the Art Park on Alkaline Springs. Food trucks, fun, and patriotic vibes are guaranteed. We're looking forward to making it a night to remember, so we'll see you at Star Stripes and Songs. The second item is Andalia Flight Fest. It's occurring Friday evening, June 20th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday, June 21st, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. The city's hosting the Fight Flight Fest event at the Sports Complex. It's organized by the Andalia Butler Chamber of Commerce and the Centerpoint Energy Airshow Officials. Flight Fest is scheduled for Friday evening, June 20th, from 6:00 to 10:00, and Saturday, June 21st, from 6:00 to 10:00. This event will feature guest appearances by the U.S. Air Force Thunderbird Crews, the U.S. Army Golden Knight Parachute Team, other airshow performers, and there will be a concert Friday evening by the Lieutenant Dan Band featuring Gary Sinise. The event includes food, drinks, and live music along with various displays and vendors. Coming up here in a few weeks, the Star Spangled Celebration, July 3rd, 2025. And this, the City of Andalia and Butler Township will present the Star Spangled Celebration on Thursday, July 3rd, beginning at 6:00 p.m. at the Andalia Sports Complex. This event is being sponsored by Bo Townsend Ford, Joseph Airport Toyota, Smedley Chevrolet, and Minster Bank, with additional support from Digital Cowboy Computers and Pickrell Schaefer and Ebling. Entertainment will be provided by the band The Blue Leafs. Fireworks by Rosy's Famous Fireworks will start at 10:00 p.m. In case of rain, the fireworks will be held on Friday, July 5th, at 10:00 p.m. With the fireworks only, there'll be no entertainment. Just a reminder, city offices will be closed on Friday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. The Recreation Center will close July 3rd at 6:00 p.m. because of the fireworks, and will be open at 7:00 a.m. to noon on July 4th. Also, as a reminder, we'll have council retreat on Monday, July 7th, at 4:00 p.m. Council members and city staff will meet to engage in dialogue about key topics and discuss future goals. The retreat will be held at the Justice Center Community Room and is open to the public. And then finally, just a reminder of our summer schedule for council meetings, the July meeting will be held on Monday, July 21st, at 7:00 p.m. The study session will tentatively begin at 5:30 p.m.
Is the rain date, is the rain date Friday or Saturday? Because it says Friday, the July 5th, but Friday is July 4th.
Should be July 4th. Friday, the 4th is going to be the rain date.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, and we have an action item.
So this evening, we're going to, we have several boards and commissions, reappointments and expirations. In your package, you would have received the list of current members of various boards and commissions whose terms expired June 30th, 2025, and are interested in reappointment.
All right, and voting to reappoint the incumbents can take place at one time. Can I have a motion? Second. I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve the candidates for the boards and commission and the reappointments. All right, next we have the administer of oath, oath of office.
You need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lay off.
Sorry, Jerry.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Now, we will administer the oath of office, and we'll begin tonight with Ms. Kristen Cox. If she could join us at the podium, where Vice Mayor Blakeslee will have the honor of swearing her in.
If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kristen Cox.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the State of Ohio, that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Andalia, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Planning Commission.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Dave Arnold, you're next. Creature of habit, so I'm gonna stand on the side. Creature of habit, so I'm gonna stand on the side. All right, so please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dave Arnold.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States and the State of Ohio, that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Andalia, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Planning Commission. There you go. Congratulations. I state your name.
I, Mike Johnston.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Ohio, that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter, observe the provisions, correct, the ordinances of the City of Andalia, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Zoning Appeals. All right, and as mayor, I hereby appoint Jack Shirley to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council. And as for the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council's appointment, I understand that Jack Froshauer will be reapproved at the board, at their next board meeting. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 25-R-31. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a facilities infrastructure improvement project Phase II contract amendment with Energy Systems Group, LLC.
Thank you. Mr. Altouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Department of Engineering Services and Parks and Recreation Department are recommending entering a Phase II contract amendment with Energy Systems Group, LLC of Newburgh, Indiana, for the planning, design, engineering, and associated processes relating to Phase II in the facilities infrastructure improvement project. The scope of work for this stage of the project includes the replacement of the Recreation Center boilers. The scope of work for Phase I was completed with final acceptance in December 2024. The Phase II work shall be treated as a separate scope of work subject to the same contract terms and conditions as the Phase I work. We're requesting to waive the formal bidding process in our Phase II contract amendment with Energy Systems Group, LLC of Newburgh, Indiana, in an amount of $206,393 for the planning, design, and associated processes relating to Phase II of the facilities infrastructure project. A total of $90,000 was budgeted for this project. We are recommending the balance of funds come from the current capital budget balances.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 25-R-31 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve Resolution 25-R-31 as presented. Are there any questions or comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. We have two ordinances in our first reading, the first being ordinance 25-13.
An ordinance rezoning 0.919 acres of land located at 3320 Benchwood Road from residential single-family to highway business and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Altouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant Jonathan Woker, AICP, with McBride Dale Clarion, and on behalf of Richard Schott, requests the rezoning of one parcel totaling .919 acres, plus or minus, located at 3320 Benchwood Road. As proposed, the subject property would be rezoned from RSF I, Single Family Residential District, to the HB Highway Business District. On May 13th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted, voted four to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 25-13 in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve ordinance 25-13 in its first reading. Are there any questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have ordinance 25-14.
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and a resolution as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you. Mr. Altouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance approves the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions that have been passed by council since the last update of the codified ordinances. This update will codify all pertinent legislation passed by council during 2024, as well as incorporating amendments to the Ohio Revised Code.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 25-14 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve ordinance 25-14 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. We have no ordinances in our second reading, however, we do have a couple emergency ordinances. The first one being ordinance 25-11.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $1,272,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding taxable land acquisition notes, Series 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Altouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. The land acquisition note issued for the acquisition of land for the Stone Quarry Crossing development matures on July 22nd, 2025. The total amount due is $1,399,000 in principal plus interest. The 2025 budget includes a principal payment of $127,000 plus an interest payment amount of $95,000. The maturity date on the new note of $1,272,000 will be in July of 2026. The debt is scheduled to be paid in full in 2036.
All right, thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, we'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being now on close to public hearing, can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move we approve ordinance 25-11 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve ordinance 25-11 as an emergency. Are there any questions or comments?
Just my, the comment I make every year when we deal with this is just for the public's knowledge, this, this ordinance and the next ordinance, neither one are new debt that the city is taking on. It's just an annual housekeeping legislation to reissue the debt, the debt that we've already committed ourselves to, so.
All right, thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have emergency ordinance 25-12.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $865,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding various purpose notes, Series 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Altouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. The fire engine 2016, 20, I'm sorry, 2016 bond anticipation note issued for a fire engine matures on August 19th, 2025. This note was combined with the fire ladder truck 2021 van in order to save the cost of issuance. The current remaining amount due on the note is $1,053,000, which is divided between the fire engine of $96,000 and the fire ladder truck at $957,000 plus interest. The amount of the principal payment for the fire engine is $48,000 and $140,000 for the fire ladder truck. The 2025 budget includes a paydown amount of $48,000 on the outstanding principal due for the fire engine and $140,000 for the fire ladder truck plus an interest payment of $63,440. The maturity on the new note for the fire engine of $48,000 and the fire ladder truck of $817,000 will be in August of 2026. The debt on the fire engine is scheduled to be paid in full in 2026 and year 2031 for the fire ladder truck.
All right, thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, we'll open up public hearings, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being now on close to public hearing, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 25-12 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dugan and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve ordinance 25-12 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. And that brings us to reports from boards and commissions, where at first we have a variance request at 650 Pool Avenue for minimum lot frontage. Mr. Altouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant Longhorn Development has requested a variance to not meet the minimum lot frontage requirement at 650 Pool Avenue. The purpose of this request is to allow Lot 3 of the landing to have zero feet of lot frontage, falling short of the required 125 feet of lot frontage. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to one to
We further ask that those who speak follow the etiquette of communicating with respect to others. As a courtesy, please stay on topic with your statements while you address council. A reminder, this is not a forum for arguments. In an effort to give all citizens the opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns, we ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible. So if anyone would like to speak, please come to the podium.
Thank you for your time. My name is, pardon me, David Todd. I live at 156 Colebrook Drive. I have lived there since 1980. Have a major issue in our neighborhood. There is one family that cannot keep their weeds and their grass cut. As it is, they're over 40 inches tall because the fences are 40 inches. Kip Melikin, if he's still the code enforcement officer, he puts signs up. You'll see a sign up five days, five days, five days. There's never any action taken when that five days expires and the job's not done. I had a neighbor come to my house day before yesterday, and we discussed the matter. Going to the department where Kip Melikin is would do no good, so that's why I'm coming here to you. It's televised, nobody can say, "I didn't know about it. Why didn't you come to me?" I feel this is the major place that you should be brought. The weeds are 40 inches, even Kip can go down. You look on both sides of the house at 144 Colebrook, you can see the weeds above the fence, and the right side, it's overgrowth. The gentleman, probably three weeks ago, there was a sign put there, and I realized he went to the hospital in an ambulance. But there was a thing, and I'm sure many Vandellians have had to do, where they were fined, or the city called somebody in to cut their weeds, their grass for them, because it was not done. Why, and I'm not asking this as a question to you, why is it that he keeps giving them time after time after time after time? I am almost 80 years old. I care for my wife 100% of the time, day and night. If I can keep my yard and my property up to code, why can't these people? There's no excuse. You live in Vandelia, and when you do that, you're just bringing the property values down for everyone around. And I'm probably the only one that would come up here and speak against it. Another thing, there's a vehicle on our street. Would that go under the police department? Is that who I would contact?
There's a what? I'm sorry.
There's a vehicle that's been parked. There's a house on our street, no one's living in it. The vehicle was, been parked on the street for eight to 10 months. So do I call the police about that, or what?
Well, we can have an officer look into it. Do you have a, if you can give us a vehicle description, we'll have someone check that out.
You want me to give that now?
Sure.
Okay, it's a white SUV. I didn't get the make or model, but it's license plate JNV9512. It's parked in front.
Do you have an address, sir?
Ooh, yeah, thank you. 131 Colebrook.
Okay, we will have an officer check it out.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Oh, Spartans, and I walk these neighborhoods. I am in the, I walk clear to Kroger and around. So I'm out in my car, and I'm out in the vehicle, or walking. At 751 Spartan, there are, right in front of them, at the curb, there are limbs there that's been there since the beginning of the year, January. Limbs and debris, I think there was a pop can and all, and it's never been dealt with. Okay? 751 Spartan, yeah, right at the curb in front, and I gave you one about the vehicle and about the weeds at 144 Colebrook, the overgrowth. I've got some other issues, which I'm gonna probably go online and do that, but I am very disappointed in Kip Melikin. I've talked to him many years back, but I just don't understand. The rest of us would do that. We would get penalized, or the city would have someone out cutting it. But, oh, may I say two? And then I'll relinquish my time. I had a neighbor that even offered to mow their grass with the riding mower, and he said, "If you'll remove the limbs that are inside the weeds and the grass, I'll be glad to mow it. I'll take care of it." That was his answer. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate your comments, Mr. Todd. We've got your contact information, and our city manager will be following up, okay?
Yes.
All right.
Lydia Plyman, 4001 Old Springfield Road. Just a question for all of you, it's not one to answer, just food for thought while I speak. Did any of you eat today, is the question? So my grandfather, Charles Benjamin Fisher, was a beekeeper in 1958. He actually taught Mr. Tuttle, who in turn taught me. My mother was the 1968 Bee Queen for the state of Ohio, so you can say that honey runs in my blood. So I have many hives, not at that address, but in general, I love bees, I love being the caretaker for some of the smallest creatures among us, so I'm here to advocate for them. So I appreciate that the city advocates for and provides funding for pollinator habitat. However, every acre of agricultural land that is turned into a warehouse, turned into a development, turned into housing, is 96 million microliters or 20 gallons of honey. And that means that you're removing per 50 acres, you're taking away 12,000 pounds of honey. That's enough to support 150 hives. And so I asked the question at the beginning because every three bites of food that you take were thanks to pollinators. So please be more considerate as you're going forward when you consider taking away agricultural land. I know it looks like it's just open land right for the taking for tax dollars, but it really does hurt the bees. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Tanya Brown, 4428 Poplar Creek Road, Vandelia, Ohio. Probably tired of seeing me up here, but, so the subdivision is gonna move forward. That, I can't, that's done, apparently. But I would like to address the form that was provided to the South Brown School Referendum Committee. As we all know now, the form provided per the charter requirement by the city manager/clerk of council, Mr. Althouse, did not meet the general laws of the state of Ohio. The Vandelia City Charter clearly requires that a petition be, quote, "substantially in the same format as provided by the clerk of council." As provided by the clerk of council. The charter also states each petition shall satisfy the requirements of the general laws of the state of Ohio regulating such petitions, except as otherwise provided in the charter. It doesn't say, once it's submitted, it just says each petition. So to me, that means the petition that was provided to us should have met the laws of the state of Ohio. I find it interesting also that in Section 4-6, the charter, of the charter, the city attorney is to, unquote, "under the direction of the city manager. He or she shall prepare all contracts, bonds, and other instruments in writing in which the municipality is concerned, and shall endorse on each his and her approval of the form and correctness thereof," unquote. So since the city is required to provide the petition instrument, I'm assuming that's an instrument, maybe you can correct me on that, the city attorney is to endorse the form's correctness. Does that not require him/her to provide a petition that meets the state of Ohio regulations, a lawful document? What is considered correct? I did a little research on that, but I'm no attorney, but the city has, the city disenfranchised its voters by not providing a lawful document. Has the city attorney not met his obligation per the charter to provide a correct form? Did Mr. Althouse fail to direct Mr. McDonald to address the petition form and make sure that it met state of Ohio requirements for correctness? If the city charter requires petitioners to use the city's form, then doesn't that place the responsibility on the city's attorney and the clerk of council to provide correct lawful documents? But the city has decided the burden of making sure the petition meets the state requirements is on the petitioners. So we are to do what I believe appears to be the city attorney's and the city manager's responsibility. So here we are. Now, it has been discussed that the city needs to change the charter. I have searched and read other charters of local cities. Springville, another city that our legal counsel represents, as do many other local charters, state the referendum committee is to use the manner provided, this is a quote, "by the constitution of the law of the state of Ohio." So in other surrounding charters, the petitioners would use the petition form that can be downloaded on the Secretary of State's website, and not depend on the city attorney or the city clerk of council to provide a lawful document. If it had been, if that had been the case in our charter, I would not be standing here this evening. We would have used the form that was provided by the state's attorney, excuse me, the Secretary of State, and I would be at my grandson's baseball game right now. But I am curious, why do we have to change the charter? Why can't the city attorney and the clerk of council perform the duties as they are described in the charter? The duties that are, that they are compensated for by our tax dollars, to prepare an instrument that is correct, lawful, and would withstand legal scrutiny. Does that require a change of the charter? Do the citizens of this city not deserve that level of consideration? Counsel has been the brunt of much of this backlash from this issue, but I do see it a bit differently. I believe that it was city staff's responsibility to provide a petition that met the state of Ohio's requirements, that they were negligent in that responsibility, and that council needs to hold them accountable. That is how council will be judged, and the citizens will be watching. That's it.
Robert Shanahan, 7733 South Brown School Road. I thought long and hard about what to say tonight, and I couldn't find words that would accurately describe how I feel and some of the people behind me feel, yet be appropriate to considering the setting. So I'm gonna change the subject a little bit. The rate of new single-family build-to-rent homes being constructed in the United States each year has been increasing exponentially since the COVID pandemic, up 15% from '23 to '24, and estimated up 40% from 2024 to 2025. Just over 10% of all single-family homes built in 2025 in the U.S. will be built to rent, like the duplex just built on the corner of South Brown School Road and Maradon Court. Does the Vandelia Comprehensive Plan or Charter ordinances deal with this issue? Does the PUD that we're talking about deal with this? What's to stop a single buyer from purchasing all 167 proposed homes and renting them all? How many of these homes will be rented in five years or 10 years anyway? During the final vote on the PUD, the council completely disregarded everything the citizens said during the last nine months, and went ahead and not only approved the PUD, but made changes to it in direct opposition to some of our objections by adding requirements that will force all homes along South Brown School Road to be two-story, towering white monuments to the low-budget vinyl siding industry. Nothing like what exists on the west side of the road, so much for a subtle transition. And you did it without soliciting any public comments. The decision was made as if to say, "We have all the power, and don't you forget it." Well, I can assure you, we will not forget it. What you have done by denying the referendum and the will of the voters is to boldly announce that Vandelia is open for business, and you are any and every developer's best friends. Come one, come all. Hey, let's revisit the warehouses. We'll just tell the people that we found a clerical error, and we have to approve them. Think of the tax dollars that are gonna start flowing in. But the first developer in line's gonna be Addison. They're gonna say to turn any profit while they're making Vandelia a shining city on the hill, they'll be forced to fill in the gorge and grid of the green space to make room for 300 tiny plastic homes, and you'll be waiting for them with open arms saying, "Yes, master, whatever you say. Your wish is our command." Well, shame on you, all of you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager. My name is Jeff Hoagland. I reside at 817 Deerhurst Drive. I am here this evening to talk about the rezoning process for 7848 South Brown School Road. First, I want to remind everyone that I've been in support of housing at this location since day one. Housing in our community, region, and state is something that is needed, but a community like Vandelia should have a higher standard than was approved in Ordinance 2502. As stated before, my objections were minor. I thought the lot should have been a little bit larger, and the building materials should have been better with no vinyl siding, a little bit more brick and stone. I don't think that's anything over the top. This is something the developer could have done and still turned the needed profit. Second, the referendum process in your charter needs fixed immediately. Per Article 9 of the city charter, the petition committee followed the process in your charter, but was denied in their attempt because of flaws in your own charter and inconsistencies with the Ohio Revised Code. In your letter dated June 3, 2025, the committee of petitioners, Mr. Althouse, through legal consultation with Mr. McDonald, stated, quote, "The form given to the petitioners was offered as a courtesy." This is a direct conflict of Section 9.3 of Vandelia's charter that states, quote, "All petition papers presented to council relating to either initiative or referendum shall be in uniform, shall be uniform in size and character, and shall be substantially in the same format as provided by the clerk of council." "As provided" to me is not a courtesy, but a requirement, but I'm not an attorney. The city asked the Board of Elections to rule on this, and the Board of Elections said in their May 23 letter that the petitioners committee should be given 10 days to rectify the signature deficiency. We know you are not changing your ruling now. You have stated that in writing twice. I understand it, I accept it. The question I ask is what will you do next? You know, the form you provided is not current with the Secretary of State's form. The Secretary of State changed that form in 2010. That's more than 15 years ago. You annually update your tax forms, your building department forms, fire, police forms, and so many more. Moving forward, as a citizen of Vandelia, I request you update the form to be current with the Secretary of State. You should consider updating your charter to make it possible and less ambiguous for future residents to file an initiative or random petition. I think you should probably do both immediately. During the rezoning process, the Planning Commission and City Council heard from many citizens and their plea for a better plan, not no development for a better plan. City Council failed to listen to their citizens. as a courtesy." This is a direct conflict of Section 9.3 of Vandalia's charter that states, quote, "All petition papers presented to counsel relating to either initiative or referendum shall be in uniform, shall be uniform in size and character, and shall be substantially in the same format as provided by the clerk of council." "As provided" to me is not a courtesy, but a requirement, but I'm not an attorney. The city asked the Board of Elections to rule on this, and the Board of Elections said in their May 23 letter that the petitioners committee should be given 10 days to rectify the signature deficiency. We know you are not changing your ruling now. You have stated that in writing twice? I understand it. I accept it. The question I ask is, what will you do next? You know, the form you provided is not current with the secretary of state's form. The secretary of state changed that form in 2010. That's more than 15 years ago. You annually update your tax forms, your building department forms, fire, police forms, and so many more. Moving forward, as a citizen of Vandalia, I request you update the form to be current with the secretary of state. You should consider updating your charter to make it possible and less ambiguous for future residents to file an initiative or random petition. I think you should probably do both immediately. During the rezoning process, the planning commission and city council heard from many citizens and their plea for a better plan, not no development for a better plan. City council failed to listen to their citizens' voice. When elected, one of your jobs is to represent your constituents, and five of you did not do that. Instead, you chose to appease the developer who is from the Cleveland area. We think with just a little more effort, a better plan could have been achieved. Vandalia has very little land available for housing, and having a higher standard with only, will only make Vandalia a better place to live and work. And finally, it's come to my attention that one of the council members reached out to one of the DDC staff members that I work with. This council member asked, quote, "Can you get me in contact with someone to talk about the roadblocks Jeff is putting up for our city?" End quote. They then said, quote, "It's like we are purposely left out of the DDC unless we reach out ourselves." This is completely inaccurate, as I know the city manager and the assistant city manager, Rob Cron, come to almost all of our events. At our most recent Washington, D.C. fly-in, members of council and staff were there. When I became involved with the rezoning process on South Brown School Road, I went on record from the beginning to say I was doing this as a citizen of Vandalia who lives across the street from the proposed development. When the Dayton Daily News covered the story and called me, they stated where I worked in the article, but then they stated that I was talking as a resident and not in my job at the Dayton Development Coalition. We have lived there for over 20 years now and raised our two boys. I cannot believe a council member would call out my ethics and my integrity to a fellow DDC staff member. This council member did not even have the courtesy to reach out to me. The council member went on to say, quote, "He is now pushing even further to stop this housing development, and I'm bewildered that every time I speak or go to an event, I hear how big that need is, but he is doing everything he can to stop that from happening in our city," end quote. As I stated in the beginning, I am 100% supportive of housing across the street from the Fox Fire Development. I always have been. I think the approved PUD should have required larger lots, better building materials, as I stated earlier, but this is where we are today. This is not trying to stop a housing development. It's not trying to stop housing in Vandalia. Just because I work outside of the city of Vandalia does not mean I can't, cannot have any input. I chose for the past 15 years to say nothing, to do nothing, but to be 100% supportive of my city. I've been asked to sit on committees, hiring processes, strategic planning surveys, and so much more. I've done so because I cared deeply about this community, where I worked and where I still reside. I could not be more disappointed in how the referendum process was handled, but even more disappointed in how a member of council chose to talk about me behind my back. Mr. McDonald, I would formally like to request the Freedom of Information Act, requesting for any council member who texted a DDC staff member on or about June 12 regarding me and the rezoning of land on South Brown School Road. Key words to look for in the text would be roadblocks, DDC, housing development, and bewildered. Thank you for your time this evening.
Does anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, we will move on then to council comments, and we will begin this evening with Mr. McDonald. Thank you. Mr. Althouse?
Just once again, want to congratulate Steve. He's been a pleasure to work with for the time I've been with him, and I know he's already exited, but we just want to wish him all the best in his retirement years.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Fairst?
Oh, gosh. Steve had a retirement party on Friday, and it was well-attended. Everybody had the opportunity to congratulate him. He's been here through seven city managers, did he say? Or you're the seventh? And so it was enjoyable to talk to him one-on-one like that, and we've been here a long time, so we've seen the progress in our Parks and Rec Department and how dedicated all our staff is. So congratulations to him. Thank you to the fire department and Chief Folick for his two presentations tonight. It was a tremendous amount of information, and we have those packets that we can go back through, and I think we'll have to catch it all. And I want to say that as a person that worked with Jeff Hoagland, I, my respect for you is immense. I would never question your moral or your ethics on anything that you chose to work on or provide to us, and I'm sorry that that happened to you. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes, we have had a lot of things going on in the community lately. First of all, we had a wonderful experience welcoming a veteran with Agent Orange and his family on Friday into a new house that was built for him. And how many people did they say were there? Like 60, I think, showed up maybe, or something like that? So that was very exciting. He's got some kids that are going to be joining the community, and that was really fun. We also, and I also attended Steve's farewell party. I also got an opportunity to do a ride-along with our police department, and it was really amazing to see all the great things that they do. They got to help a man that was really just out down on his luck and helped him get some food that evening. They helped a baby in a little bit of a stressful situation and really just care for our community. And I got to talk to a lot of them, and they love working here and doing some great things. The next few weeks are going to be really busy with between the, you, sorry, I had to look it up because it is not called the Backyard Bash anymore, and I almost called it that, but the Stars, Stripes, and Songs, and then Flight Fest and the Star Spangled Celebration. So I hope everybody takes some time to get out and enjoy those fun community events, and that is all.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
I want to thank the people who were reassigned to boards and commissions for re-upping. I guess there's probably only one here. And I want to congratulate Steve Clark on his well-deserved retirement. I, I too hate to see him go because he's a wonderful person and has done a great job for the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis?
Well, I echo those comments about Mr. Clark, who I've known for several decades, and through his leadership. We have, we're a town of 15,000 people approximately. Population's fairly static, and he has developed, with the help of others, one of the most robust Parks and Rec programs within the state of Ohio, and we have a lot to be proud of. It's a, it's a heck of an attribute for the city, a real positive point, and we have in large part Steve Clark to thank for that. And so with that said, congratulations, Steve. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Folick?
Thank you. I do have a few things. First, I want to echo, I've mentioned before, but congratulations to Mr. Clark and his retirement. At Friday's party at the park, his wife shared with me, which I had not recalled this, but she made the comment about the day that Katie was born, which I must have been an employee at the outdoor pool at the time. I had stopped by the house, and she, she pointed out that you were the first non-family member to hold her, and I was like, oh, well, I don't remember that at all, but, so, you know, I've known the Clarks for a long time. They're a great family. Steve has been tremendous for the city, and I wish him the best in his retirement. I want to echo the thanks to boards and commission members that have agreed to reappointment and that agree to serve as citizen volunteers for the city. Some of our boards and commission members put in a lot of time at regular meetings, sometimes two, three meetings a month, and sometimes on topics that are controversial. And they are volunteers, but they do it to better our community, and thank you for those that have both renewed their, their terms on our boards and commissions and also those new ones that are stepping into the, to the fold. And we have the need for more, so if you have an interest in serving on any of our boards and commissions, the information's available on our website, or I'm sure Mrs. Schwartz would be glad to speak with you in the city manager's office. I would like to give a preemptive thank you to city staff for all of their collective efforts, and I mean every department in the city. Over the next several weeks, between airshow, Fourth of July, our staff is going to be putting in tremendous amount of hours and efforts to provide services and programs in our, in our community that I think a lot of communities would, would love to have. So those next couple of weeks, there's a lot of hours that staff volunteer for, and I would like to thank them in advance for what I know will be some outstanding programs throughout the city. And real quick on the referendum issue, a couple of things. One, I would also echo Councilwoman Fairst's comments about Mr. Hoagland. I apologize on behalf of whatever council member contacted the DDC, because I don't believe that was appropriate, and I also don't, don't question Mr. Hoagland's ethics or morals, so I apologize for that. I would also like to address statement, a couple of statements that were made tonight, but also that I've seen on social media, and I just would be cautious about what I consider borderline slandering some of our city staff members. I do not believe any city staff member did anything intentional to derail this process. I would agree with Mr. Hoagland's comments that we are in need of a charter amendment on this issue. We are in need of charter amendments on a couple of issues in the city. But as Mr. Hoagland knows, charter amendments are not done overnight. Counsel can't do them on our own, and ultimately, there's a process that has to go through and be started and ultimately taken to the residents to see if the charter should be changed or not. So I think, you know, we even had an issue come up earlier tonight that would require a charter amendment. So that is probably something that counsel will need to initiate in the near future, is looking at the charter and see what, what changes need to be made to the charter, because that's not something that we can do on our own. Lastly, and I, I don't know if somebody from the petitioners group want to respond to this, but I guess one thing I have not seen in all the social media comments that have been made over the past several weeks is on March the 6th, there was an email communicated to Mr. Hoagland, and I'm assuming on behalf of the petitioner group, that states, the attached, and I'll read it as it states, "Attached is a form referendum petition so that you can see the size, character, format of referendum petitions based on the requirements of the city of Vandalia charter. As each petition must also satisfy the requirements of the general laws of the state of Ohio, you should check with your own legal counsel to make sure it complies with any applicable Ohio election laws. The city staff, including the city attorney, does not provide legal advice on the preparation or filing of referendums." So I guess my question is, was legal counsel consulted prior to that process as the guidance from city staff was given? Because I feel that, that, that communication and the forms repeat that same statement at the bottom of the forms. Was the city's good-faith effort to address the issue that the forms that were provided may not meet current election laws because the charter does not change with election laws? Election laws are changed frequently, and the charter does not change that frequently. So that's just something that I would throw out there. Lastly, I think, yes. Lastly, I would just like to extend condolences to the family of Ted Rusen. Mr. Rusen was a longtime city of Vandalia employee. He served as our service director and city engineer for 28 years from the 80s, 90s, and early 2000s. He was very instrumental in a lot of our growth and development in Vandalia during that time. Anyone that knows Mr. Rusen knows how nice of a man he was, but also how much of a professional he was and was a great employee for the city. All three of his daughters worked for the city in some capacity in Parks and Recreation, so the family was very involved in, in Vandalia. So I would like to extend the condolences to Ann, Becky, Christie, and Mary Beth for the loss of Ted, and that's all I have.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Well, I'll echo what, and keep it short, that all the other council members have commented from events to boards and commissions volunteering and staff's work coming forth. And of course, Ted Rusen, I knew Ted as well and worked with him many years as well, and I know that he did a lot for the city in regards to budgets. When the city didn't have the money to do things, he would actually go out and, as the Marines would say, improvise, adapt, and overcome, and held the city together with literally duct tape. He's a great man, and he'll be missed as well. The same thing for Steve Clark. He'll be missed as an employee, spent so many years helping to develop the Parks and Recreation, and I know you've got some big shoes to fill, but I'm also confident that I know he has bestowed upon the staff his great knowledge and wealth and the love of the city and the Parks and Rec to help carry that legacy on. And I, I think that he'll be proud of, of where you take it, and I even had a conversation with him. In fact, he'll say, he said that he would like to see where it goes now, how to improve on what he already had. So I think that challenge is out there, and that will be taken care of. Other than that, that's all I have tonight.
I agree with what, you know, several of the council members have said here tonight, but again, I'd just like to congratulate Mr. Clark on his retirement and wish him and his family well, and as Vice Mayor Blakesley said, looking forward to seeing what, where we go in the future. Also like to thank everyone for showing up tonight and speaking. It shows that you care deeply about our community and just as we do, so we do appreciate everyone coming out tonight. With that, this meeting is adjourned.